Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Midwest City Council Meeting, November 8th, 2022 version. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I would ask for you to stand and Mr. Sullivan, would you lead us in the invocation? And Ms. Bame, would you lead us in the pledge?
I'd just ask you to bow with me, please. Almighty Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this meeting this evening and the freedom to assemble the way we are tonight, Father. And these men and women who serve on this council, we're thankful for their service and their commitment and their sacrifice that they make so that the city of this, the business of this city can be conducted, Father. And during this special week in our nation of election time and our Veterans Day holiday, we're especially thankful and mindful of those men and women who have given and sacrificed to ensure that we have the freedom to be in this place tonight and the freedom to conduct the business of this city, in this state, in this nation, the freedom to vote. We thank you for those men and women who have served and those who continue to serve all over the world tonight to ensure these freedoms. Give them peace and safety and comfort. Thank you so much for the men and women who serve this city, no matter the role, whether it be in public safety, public works, administration, whatever they do, they, we have some very beautiful and talented people that serve this great city and we're thankful for them. Thank you so much for the ultimate example we all have to follow of sacrifice as service above self through your son, Jesus Christ, and the blood that he shed on our behalf and the forgiveness from sin that we have through that blood. And we ask all of these favors in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Ready, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have several proclamations to do this evening. First off, Ken Erickson, you want to come up?
I first met Ken when he was 18 years old and came into the Air National Guard. And then he came over to the Midwest City Public Officers. So it's got quite a history. Most of it cannot be uncovered yet. Anyway, Ken has decided to retire from the Midwest City Police Department. And so, Ken, we're here to honor your service to our community and also wish you best wishes in your retirement. And he hadn't hung up his gun. He became a marshal for where?
Bethany.
Bethany. Four square miles, is it?
Five.
Five. Awesome. Whereas Sergeant Ken Erickson began his career in the Midwest City Police Department in September of 1997 as a rookie police officer, promoted to sergeant in 2001 and retiring in 2022. Whereas Ken Erickson has dedicated his career and life to helping and serving others, using his personal time to participate in community outreach projects such as Shop with Cop, Bowling with Feds, and you're dating yourself on that one, at which his goal was to make sure that all children present had a smile on their face. And whereas not only has he been, was he an excellent officer protecting our community, but also known to stop and assist stranded people, among other acts of kindness, such as assisting training officers in smaller towns, volunteering for Honor Guard, thus representing the city, or Midwest City Police Department as professional and caring. And whereas Sergeant Erickson served on the SWAT team, Special Investigations Unit, and was municipal court warrant officer, and also gifted and diligent and dedicated instructor, teaching LEDT instructor, and more, sharing his knowledge beyond the basics to ensure that the law enforcement personnel were fully prepared and equipped for their ever-increasing difficult task of upholding law and protecting innocent. So therefore, I'm Matthew Dukes, Midwest Mayor of Midwest City. You hereby proclaim November 9th is Sergeant Erickson Day in the city of Midwest City. And hereby I urge everyone to show Sergeant Erickson the appreciation he deserves for his outstanding service to our community. Congratulations. Thank you.
So from the city, in special recognition of Kenneth Erickson, Jr., for loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Midwest City, Oklahoma, September 25th, 1997 to September 27th, 2022. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Appreciate you. Fantastic job over the years. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Ladies and gentlemen, these are folks that work behind the scenes that never get any recognition. They're responsible for making sure that you got water and you got sewer. And it's a pleasure to recognize these guys tonight because they've gotten a special award. Like I said, there's a lot of folks that get a lot of recognition. You never see these folks unless something went wrong at your house. But they do an excellent job to this community and we could not have a safe community without their dedication. Like in last month, we did a resolution recognizing 500-plus employees we have in this city and the great job they do. And this is just a small portion of it. Whereas the city, Midwest City Public Works, Line Maintenance Division, is deserving recipient of the 2022 Municipal Assurance Group, O-MAG, Large Municipal Sewer System of the Year. Whereas the Line Maintenance Division staff are an integral part of the city of Midwest City and Public Works Division, responsible for the operation, repair, and improvement of water distribution system and sewer collection system. Whereas we wish to recognize their outstanding long-range planning and discussions that have supported, been that supported by the Midwest City Council, city management and risk management via investments in needed upgrades and increased funding for infrastructure. Whereas our Line Maintenance Division staff has long been a source of great pride for our city and has proven to be an example and credit to the great state of Oklahoma. So therefore, I'm Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, hereby proclaim and recognize the Public Works Division, Line Division staff, and hereby proclaim November 8th, 2022 as Line Maintenance Division Appreciation Day, and hereby urge all of our citizens to appreciate and recognize these men as they go about their day of the job. And if you're not aware, in the city of Midwest City, we have an ISO-1 rating for our fire department. But a lot of that ISO-1 rating goes to these guys to be able to put the wet stuff on the hot stuff. Am I correct in saying that, Chief? So they're part of that as well. So please give them a hand.
This is the award from the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. It's dear and dear to my heart. It's on the white chair of the trust. I found out about this. None from Paul, but.
Right. So I obviously had nothing to do with this as being on the board. So you guys won this fair and square against the municipalities. And, you know, I'm pretty proud of that because the, one of the, one of the O-MAG's major loss area is, is in the suburbs side from clogs and backups. And to win this award is really important. And for them to honor you guys, it shows what a great program we have, what great leadership we have at Public Works, what great supervisors, employees we have on the line. I know we're short on numbers over there, but to win this award with the numbers that you have is like, you know, winning the Super Bowl, playing both sides of the ball the whole game. You know, so congratulations and I'm proud of you guys. Thank you, Justin.
Hey, Paul, could you make sure let the boss know?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
He could have still said verbally to him.
Who was having surgery?
Mom has to try again.
Well, she was still planning on being here if she felt better. So I was just seeing if we'd.
We've got one more and I'll do that from the chair. And this one sneaks up on us every year. And I would love to have some of our small business owners present with us.
I'm a small business owner.
Oh, my God. But, you know, small businesses make up our economic system throughout the United States. You know, Heinz ketchup didn't start out as Heinz ketchup. It started out as an experiment trying to make a better sauce for spoilt meat. And the, and the, and the success stories throughout our history go on and on. Hershey Chocolate, another one, started out in, as an experiment. So small businesses are extremely important, not only to our economy, but to our overall economies throughout the United States. And they also, that, you know, Hobby Lobby started out in a garage. Look at them today. So I want to encourage everybody to visit and shop our small businesses, our homegrown businesses, and, and support them as much as you possibly can. So you've got an opportunity to do so. Whereas Small Business Saturday is a nationwide movement to support small local businesses and is celebrated on Saturday following Thanksgiving. And according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32 million small businesses in the United States. And whereas small businesses are responsible for 62% of the new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 79% of the consumers surveyed understand the importance of supporting small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, and 70% reported and makes it, makes them want to encourage others to shop at small business, locally independent-owned retailers. Whereas 50% or 58% of the surveyed shoppers reported they shop online or with small businesses, and 54% reported that they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, cafe, on Small Business Saturday in 2021. Whereas Midwest City wishes to celebrate our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local community and economy. So therefore, I'm Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim November 26th, 2022 to be Small Business Saturday and encourage all residents to support our small businesses. And we have a bunch of them here in Midwest City throughout the year. Thank you. So, and again, I wish, here, I guess I can give that to you. Okay, we'll move into community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon.
Thank you, Mayor. So just continuing on with what the mayor just talked about, being Small Business Saturday, November 26th, we received our sales tax check for the month today. We are, we are at overall for year-over-year, 4.99% in sales tax. Our use tax was actually down 6.74%, which is about $28,000. Overall, for the month, we're up 3.78%. A little disconcerting about the use tax because I think that shows that money is probably going more for food and other things in the community than it is for use tax right now, which traditionally comes off the internet or from building costs, having things delivered to your house to, to build with. So it's probably a little bit an indicator of, of the economy. It's something we watch closely, but we're happy at 3.78%. Mark your calendars for our annual Veterans Day Parade on Friday, November 11th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. The weather is predicted to be dry. It's probably going to be a little bit cold, so bundle up and support our veterans. We'll have several council members and spouses that'll be participating and handing out candy as we go through the parade. So looking forward to that. If your trash and recycling services are scheduled for Thanksgiving Day, please place your trash and a week recycling at the curb before 7:00 a.m. the preceding Wednesday, which is November 23rd. So the Wednesday before Thanksgiving Day, if you fall on Thursday. So we're still picking up Friday as normal. Is that, is that correct? Okay, and then the compost facility and brush drop-off will be closed the weekend after Last week, Midwest City proudly welcomed Tacos for Life to Town, to Town Center Plaza. This is the 26th Tacos for Life company-wide and the first of its kind in the Oklahoma City market. Tacos for Life offers a variety of gourmet tacos and other delicacies with 25 cents of the sale of every entree going to conquer world hunger. So I was not here when it opened. I was at a board meeting, but the day after that, my wife went and got tacos. So I've already tried them and they were really good. So I'd encourage all citizens, based on my experience, to please go try out Tacos for Life. And they're really big tacos. They're not street tacos. They're, they're big tacos. Very good. I think what's next, Mr. Stroh's going to come up and talk about our food drive. We have a video to show. Can everyone see that? So that are, that is the food that was collected at Sam's Club for the food drive. Mike, take it away from there.
Yes, so this past weekend was Midwest City's 12th Annual Food Drive. We collected 26 pallets of food. Last year, we collected 27. So we were very, very excited about collecting 26 this year. We actually guesstimated that we'd be somewhere around 20 just due to the cost of food and inflation. So it was a great, great event. The food will be used for our annual Christmas food baskets. And for the first time ever this year, we will be doing a limited number of Thanksgiving baskets as well. If you would like to be added to the Thanksgiving basket list, please call 405-739-1009. You will need to give your name and address, and these baskets are to help our Midwest City residents. They do not. And it is a win-win for us to do the food drive. We partner with Sam's Club. Sam's Club gets the sales. Of course, with that, we get the sales tax. Then the residents donate as they come out. And then Neighborhood Services takes the food, sorts it. And we get help from both Midwest City High School Honor Society Kids and Carl Albert High School Honor Kids. They help us and do the baskets for us. And then we distribute them on a, ever since COVID, we do a pickup where the, the residents come to our building and pick them up. So it's, it's been a great, great event. I would like to publicly thank these groups for their help with the food drive. USC Federal Credit Union, the Midwest City branch is located off Reno and Davidson. Midwest City Police Department, Midwest City Fire Department, the Midwest City Citizens' Police Academy alumni, our own Midwest City Mayor, spent the weekend there as well. All of the Midwest City Neighborhood Services staff, the Midwest City Sam's Club, and then, of course, all of the residents that donated food to us. It will help approximately 200 families between the two holidays. And then we also help food banks with the Middel Schools and Autumn House. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Good job. Good job.
That's all the announcements I have.
Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda. So the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests an item to be an item, or if an unanimous consent is not received, then the item or items will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries by unanimous consent. We move into discussion items of our agenda. Mr. Lyon, discussion item number one.
Discussion consideration for adoption, including any amendments of an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Code 2, or Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2, City Council, Section 2-11, time of regular meetings of council and providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This was a request item by councilperson Bana. What this change would do would move the city of Midwest City back from having one meeting per month for city council meetings, back to two meetings per month for each and every month. Little bit of history, Midwest City for years did have two meetings per month. That was, the changes started in December of 2020. And I believe, Mr. Reed, you may have helped spur that along back in December of 2020. And we moved about six, five or six months then to one meeting a month. Then in December of 2021, the city council liked that so much, we went to 11 months where there was only one meeting per month, with the month of June still having two meetings a month. The month of June is required to have two meetings a month to, under state law, to cover the budget and the budgetary issues. Received this request from councilperson Bana, put it on the agenda. It did come up before the Ordinance Review Committee in October, at their October 18th, 2022 meeting. The Ordinance Review Committee did vote three to nothing to not recommend this change be made to the ordinances for the city of Midwest City. If this change were to be approved, it would, we would go back to two meetings per month, and that's what the language does. Last thing I do want to mention, for this, for this discussion item and for each of the discussion items tonight, since they're all ordinance changes, under state law, we are required that a majority of all members of the city council must, a majority of them must approve the ordinance change. So even though Ms. Eads is not here, she is counted in that group of seven, so it's still, you have to look at a majority of the seven. So it will take four votes for each one of these items for that ordinance change to be approved. And it doesn't matter if it's this one or any of the other four.
So is it 3-3 tie without her? Would that be a failure or a approval?
That'd be a failure. Any three votes would be a failure. You must have four affirmative votes to pass an ordinance change under state statute. Because as the state statute is written, it requires a majority of all members of the city council. And the Supreme Court has determined that phrase "all members" to equal even absent members. So it will take four vote, four affirmative votes to change any of the ordinance changes that are on the agenda for tonight. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions or councilperson Bana, if you have any comments to add.
I guess I have a question, and then I'd like to add a little bit more background on why I suggested this. Can you, obviously I wasn't around, was this, was the change to reduce the number of meetings? And I know it was during the COVID era. Did that have, or was?
No, it happened. Sorry. I forget that, even though my voice carries, it doesn't carry very well in his recording sometimes. It was done because it was overly burdensome sometimes on staff. So we would have a council meeting on Tuesday, and while we would go two weeks before our next council meeting, staff the very next day had to start getting everything ready because it needed to be basically firmed up by the following week because Dawn had to go through it, Sarah had to go through it, Jill had to touch it, Tim has to touch it. And it was just continuous. It was every single, and this is, tonight's a perfect example, I think, why we don't need two meetings. We have a 79-page agenda, which will take us 20 or 30 minutes to get through. And so, and staff, in talking to them, they feel that they're more productive with one meeting because we're still getting things done. And we also did it with the understanding of something comes up and we have to have another meeting in a month, that we would all show up for that meeting. That was kind of the understanding that was done. But this takes a little bit of burden off the staff and it makes them more productive to where they don't just continually run that hamster wheel. And I'm not quite sure what additional oversight's needed because by charter, we're not allowed very much oversight anyway.
So actually, I did read the charter and as a matter of fact, it was kind of the scope of the different types of duties that it dictated that we are supposed to carry. I know, at least my experience, being kind of new to this body, my majority of time, my only contact with the city or the city where I get any information or any updates about anything that is happening is usually when I come to a council meeting. I also noticed that some of our agenda packets are extremely long, like 700 pages. Sometimes we get them on the Thursdays, sometimes we get them on a Friday before a Tuesday meeting. I do my due diligence to read every word from front to back of every agenda, but sometimes it requires additional research. And some of the decisions seem to have been already made, right? And we're just coming to make a final vote on it. So I figured, the reason I put it on there, and, and Dawn, forgive me, I'm a little new to this, so the way that I send you language, sometimes I need to narrow it down particularly. I do not, and, and thank you for clarifying that because, you know, I knew that there was a monetary piece of it every time we have to turn on the lights and hold a meeting.
Well, I mean, the monetary.
But the staff.
Reason for, there was no monetary reason for me. It truly doesn't take any more money to turn the lights off or leave them off, on or off. And that, that these rooms are air-conditioned or heated anyway. It was the fact that, one, we're taking staff who has family. And instead of one night, it was two nights a month where they're away from their family, but it was more than that because they're working late to get the agendas together multiple times throughout. And so it, it, work-life balance, them being more productive, everything else, that's, and again, there was no monetary.
No, and I, and I value that because I, I recognize that they have to prepare the agenda, and like you said, in a week, they have to turn around and be ready to prepare another agenda. But just to correct, maybe if I could amend the language, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that we have two meetings every month. For example, November and December, where are the holiday months, it would be, my suggestion would be to have the one meeting as we have set now. And, and I appreciate what you said, that there's always the opportunity to ask for a special meeting. But, and to give the reasonings, one was because when the agendas are shorter and limited, that gives us more opportunity to read through them with the diligence necessary, do follow-up research, maybe even have some meetings with the city if it's necessary before an item is brought up before us for a vote. I also thought having two meetings made this government body more accessible to the residents. Instead of being reduced to one meeting, that whether they can make it or not, they would have two opportunities to engage with their local municipal government. And then I also figured that the engagement between all of us and just the contact with the city would keep us all informed in attune of what is happening. So those were my reasonings for suggesting this, but I am open to any discussion and I, and I respect and value what you said regarding the burden that this would put on the staff.
Councilperson Bana, just one, one item. I did list in here and I forgot to mention it. For November and December, I did leave it at just one meeting a month in the language that is proposed due to that very reason, because of the holiday, because of the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays that cover the fourth, the fourth week of the month in each one of those months.
Okay, we.
I want to say something on this one real quick. When I saw this agenda, Ida come up on, councilwoman Bana requested that, I did do some due diligence, and I did notice out of all of the cities within the Oklahoma City Metro and Tulsa, I could only find two cities that only had one monthly council meeting. So I do think it would benefit the city of Midwest City for our citizens. We were elected by our constituents just for clarity, communication for them of what's going on. It would help me personally. There's been times where I've had to, staff has been excellent on responding to questions, information. Tim has been wonderful. But there's times where I've had to, I'm waiting a day to get an email, and then it leads to something else I have to contact. leads to something else I have to contact, or I'm having to take off work to come up here to figure out a situation. Instead of going from month to month to find out situations, I just think it would help all of us communicate better, to get information out to the residents. I did have a constituent contact me over the weekend, and she was all about going back to two meetings a month. She thought it would help for clarity, it would give constituents more opportunities to attend and share their concerns, and just input, provide input. So I agree with you on that.
When we compare ourselves to other cities like Oklahoma City, Oklahoma City's meetings are 9:00 AM in the morning, and that is not accessible to most of the constituents that we have.
No, but I did.
But I'm just saying that if we're comparing ourselves, let's compare apples to apples.
Okay, I looked at more. More is comparable in population.
Okay, I let you speak. I'll let you speak. So if we'd go to two for safety of this, for, for staff, I would suggest that we went at nine o'clock in the mornings, because that way staff's not going to have to go overtime, and that makes our meetings less accessible, not more so.
Okay, let me, let me get us back on track. Okay.
It makes us less accessible to our constituents that you just said you were concerned about.
We've kind of gotten out of, out of whack here. Let's, we're combining the two discussion items, actually. So let's dispose of the first one, and then we can get into the second one, because that's probably where your concern is. So, and we've gotten off track, we're supposed to have a motion and then discussion, we've kind of reversed that. That's okay, nobody's going to put us in jail for it. But I would have to entertain a motion on discussion item number one.
Motion to deny.
I have a motion and a second. Now, is there any further discussion or amendments?
The only thing I want to add to it is that I went back and looked from, it actually went back and looked at 2020 and through today, and we've actually had nine times where we had to call special meetings. Let's take away 2020, because that doesn't count for, because it doesn't have, we were doing two meetings a month, but four times since we've changed back to once a month, we've called special meetings. And they've been extremely important. One was a, it was a hospital grant meeting, it was a joint meeting, it wasn't a scheduled meeting. Another was when our bond guy passed away, and we were on a deadline to get the paperwork done. We came in at 11 o'clock on a day. And then we had the strategic plan meeting, which was a special meeting. And then we, we had one earlier this year on the hospital project on the plan, because it was pretty, it was elaborate, it was, it was long, it was, there was a lot to it. And it wasn't going to be, it wasn't conducive to come to the meeting. So, and I, like I said, I voted against it, but, and I was, I was pretty vocal when we went to this originally, I didn't want it. I thought it was a mistake. But it's worked. And I want, I want it to continue to work, but it's going to take a commitment from the rest of us here, that when Mr. Lyons calls us and says, we've got, we need a special meeting, we need a quorum, we need you guys to be here. And if you remember, there was one time we came in at seven o'clock in the morning for a special meeting. It was that important, because we needed people here. It's going to take a commitment, again, from all of us, that we will, we will be here if they need us to come in for a meeting.
And let me add to your concern. When we came into office, there was a lack of communication to the council. And we've worked extremely hard to correct that. So we need to step our game up a little bit to ensure that you guys are kept in the loop. And, and that falls back on Mr. Lyon and getting his updates out weekly, and making sure they're thorough and complete. So I, I understand exactly where you're coming from, because we were there once as well. And again, this wasn't done as a cost-saving measure, it was done as a work-saving measure for our staff, so.
One thing I'd like to add, I believe to help figure out what's coming up in the next agendas, the planning commission meets the first Tuesday of every month. A vast majority, when we have a 745-page agenda, it's usually because it's something big's coming on the planning agenda. Is it, it meets on that first Tuesday, and then when it comes to us the following month? Is that correct? Tim?
No, it's.
It comes on, it, it, the planning commission, as you said, meets the first week of the month. That information then comes on the, this meeting, the fourth meeting of the month.
You'd have three weeks to be able to know what big items were going to come from the planning commission, and that's what I do. But I was on the planning commission, so I mean, that was a little trick that I knew. But the vast majority of large things come through the planning commission. And if you look at the, what comes out the agenda, that agenda packet also comes out the Thursday or Friday before their month, their, their first Tuesday of the month meeting. And then that will let you know what's coming our way, how they vote, or everything else like that. It will give you weeks and weeks of a head start on the agenda that we're going to look at.
And if you're really bored, get the Midwest City Beacon, because everything that goes to the planning commission is in the Midwest City Beacon.
Plus two, you should be, you should be getting those agendas via email. And if you're not.
The planning commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, back to what I was saying, Sarah, in the Midwest City Beacon, in the public notice section, everything that goes to the planning commission goes there. And it's, and you can find out a lot of stuff fairly early.
So I've been making it my business to read the Beacon. I actually just became a transcriber. So, and I appreciate the information, it's not a matter of boredom, I think it's very educational. I would, I just wonder, I also know that, I believe, I don't know what the rules or regulations, I didn't see anything in the charter specifically on this, that there may be a meeting where maybe the mayor and the vice mayor sit down with Tim to prepare for the monthly agenda items. I don't mind attending those meetings, whether they're at 7:00 AM or 5:00 PM, but that gives me more access to prepare and have the information that may be coming up on this next month's agenda. But that doesn't, I guess, solve the problem with the community's ability to engage. And again, that's why I put that on there. I'm willing to do extra things to make sure I'm getting that information. Another suggestion would be, I know a lot of times our agenda packets are amended as they need to be, last-minute type of stuff. I don't know if it may, and Tim, you may be able to answer this, it may be too much for the staff, if there's a request, for example, to, to have that temporary preliminary proposed agenda pop up, you know, a week before our scheduled meeting, with the understanding that there may be potential amendments or changes before the Friday.
The agenda is a, is a flowing document that flows throughout all that time. And so there's really not a preliminary agenda until that Thursday. And Jill brings me the preliminary agenda on Thursday, I review it, the final agenda, and then it's sent out that evening. So there's really not a, there's really, it doesn't really exist. People put things into municipal code, the municipal site, and then it's going through multiple staff members, at least four or five layers of staff to get to that point, so.
Well, I don't have any other discussion unless other people do. I know there was a motion to reject it, and it was seconded, so I.
But let me, let's say one other thing, just real quick. I mean, if there are things that, you know, I try to put in the Friday report, which I try to, I mean, I don't do them every single Friday, but most Fridays, you get a Friday report from me of some kind. I try to put items in there to make you aware of what's coming in front of you, but I can be more cognizant of agenda items that might maybe would help you do that.
And just as, just more information on things that happen, for example, we've had a few incidents, I learned about them on the news first, I followed up with you, and I think there was more follow-up information. But sometimes we get calls from residents who see things on the news, and for us to have factual information, and I know it's preliminary, I know it's not full. For example, I'll give you the example of the woman who allegedly fell in that hole. I still don't know why the holes were there, what caused it, what, what the update of, you know, outside the fact that she survived the incident that was provided by a news report. I don't have any other information on that. So if I get a call from a resident, I really probably have less information than what they may have picked up on the news.
Yeah, that's, that's a two-edged sword. There's already a litigate, that case is already litigated, so now it would have to be an executive session for me to discuss that inside or outside the organization.
And that's why often we don't, that's why often we don't get information, like the shootings, there's investigations that have to be there. The single worst thing, in my opinion, that we can do is make a comment. As a council member, when there's an impending investigation or a lawsuit going, it could cost the city millions of dollars by saying something because we thought or we heard. And so, we do, once the investigations are over, we do hear. But there's a lot of stuff that's not in our purview, specifically by the charter, that we don't have any right to know that, especially if it's something that an ongoing investigation is going on. And one off-the-cuff remark can cause us a lot of money, or whoever it is that's maybe being sued rightfully or wrongly, could cause them all kinds of damage that we didn't mean to do.
Okay, good discussion. We need to make note of, are you getting the CMO updates?
I am, and I'm very grateful to those. But I will, just for the matter of transparency, they're not consistent on every situation, right? And I think, I think Tim is working to, to make sure that those are more consistent. I appreciate the Friday reports particularly. Oftentimes, I want to respond to just say, "Thank you," or "This is great news," but I don't even want to take up any more time. I've received the information, I put it in the back of my head, and I move along. But I, I encourage more of those CMO updates, particularly as those incidents happen, just for, for awareness in our community.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and just end the discussion on this particular discussion item. I do have a motion and a second on the floor to deny this request. Due to the information that Mr. Marsh passed on to us, I will have to call for a roll call vote. So Ms. City Clerk, could you go ahead and proceed with that?
Four, two.
No. What are you voting?
Well, I'm.
Oh, I'm.
You'll want to say yes.
Yes, yes, okay.
So motion to.
Yes.
Okay. Three?
No.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
No.
Six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries to deny. Next discussion item, item number two, Mr. Lyons.
Discussion consideration for adoption, including any amendments of an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Two Administration, Article Two, City Council, Section Two dash eleven, time of regular meetings of council, providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Marsh.
Before you start talking, when are we supposed to make a motion? Are we supposed to make it after he presents his stuff, after, after citizens? And I'm not asking to be a smart, but I'm asking to try and make sure. Or we do it after, if there's public discussion? Do we do it before we have our discussion?
We, we get a motion before we have our discussion.
After he talks?
After he talks.
Okay.
And then, after the motion.
When there's public discussion, do we then make the motion after the public has talked, or before?
Well, it depends on the, if there is a public hearing attached to the agenda, then we would entertain a motion and then have the public discussion. So we can have all the information we need to make a decision.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know where the source or what the authority you may be using for that change is. And again, maybe I'm stupid here, please help me.
No, you're not.
So if, if we make a motion before we have discussion, wouldn't it be better to have discussion, and then based on that discussion, make a motion?
Normally, that, you're, you're right, but in Robert's Rules, which we, we don't adapt, we don't adopt fully, but they do, this is the proper order. A motion is made, then we have the discussion, and then a motion can be amended after the discussion, if that makes sense.
Can a motion be amended if it's been seconded?
Yes, it can, as long as the person making the motion will accept the amendments, pull their motion back, and I know it gets complicated, pull their motion back, and then restate the motion with the amendments.
Okay. I wasn't trying to be difficult.
No, no, it's, it's a new deal, I understand, and it's going to take us some little time to, to walk through the process, but we, we want to, we want to make sure that we're following proper parliamentary procedure. So with that being said, Mr. Marsh.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the same city ordinance concerning meeting dates and times. This amendment will add two meeting, two months to having two additional, having two meetings total. They would both be on the second Tuesday of the month, one would be in January. The reason for January is a staff request specifically concerning zoning and planning commission issues. The issue is that the gap is too large between the meeting in December, which is the second Tuesday of the month, and the meeting in January, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month currently. They believe by having the second meeting, it will help facilitate getting items passed and keeping projects moving along. Also, last year, I know with some of the geo-bond issues, that six-week gap with change orders and things like that had issues. So staff believes having an extra meeting in January on the second Tuesday of the month would benefit staff as well.
For clarity, we would go from 13 to 15 meetings, to January, to May, to June.
That's right. And the second one is May. The second meeting is May, which again, would be in the second Tuesday of the month, would help to facilitate discussion on the budget that is necessary for the city council. Historically, that meeting has been called and has been a special meeting. This would set it as a regularly scheduled meeting for the city council, as opposed to having to call it as a special meeting. So this amendment would change the current setup, as councilperson Reed just said, you'd have two meetings in January, two meetings in May, two meetings in June. Both of those meetings would be the second Tuesday of the month, fourth Tuesday of the month. And then every other month, there would be one meeting a month. The only difference would be November and December, not the fourth Tuesday of the month, but the second Tuesday of the month.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this particular item?
With understanding, again, on those, on those months that we just have one, there's a need, we all agree, that we're not coming. Okay, 48 hours, no, that's correct.
That's correct, 48 hours.
And just for a matter of clarity, and I just can't recall what the language in the charter may be off the top of my head, it would be Tim who would decide if there's a need for a special meeting.
Tim, or if he's not here, who's designated, who would be?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I do have a motion, and I have a second. Is there any further discussion on this particular item? Ms. City Clerk, due to the issues, would you please do a roll call vote?
Four, two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Six.
Yes. Yes, I think that's a unanimous consent. Good discussion on these items, I appreciate it.
That was funny. He can be funny, and I can try to be.
You could always explain, if you really like it, would you put it in? Oh, you're close, you have a pen, you can stop me.
I could, and I'm considering it. I don't like sitting this close to you.
I don't like sitting this close to you either, Ben, hey, there's better.
Why do I do this?
We'll be back in the regular council meeting next month, right, Mr. Bundy?
Mr. Bundy?
Please.
We will be in, we're, thank you. Discussion item number three, Mr. Lyons.
Discussion consideration for adoption, including any amendments of an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Thirteen, Drainage and Flood Control, Article Three, Stormwater Runoff Control, Section Thirteen dash seventy-one, Requirements Relating to Improvement, Section Thirteen dash seventy-three, Figures, and Provider for Repealer and Severability. Mr. Marsh.
Yes, thank you. This is a return of this item. The city council saw this item about six, eight months ago. It was based off of a recommendation by staff concerning where the fence location would be when you had a concreted over, open trench within the city of Midwest City. At that time, the thought was to have that fence six feet away from the, from the open trench. That was actually approved and recommended for approval by the Ordinance Review Committee. It came before city council, and that was, in fact, turned down by the city council at that time, asked that we go back and we change the language to allow the fence to be up against the concrete of the open trench, thereby allowing the homeowner or the person who owns that property the ability to maintain that property without having to get back around and try to figure out how to get back behind the fence. These changes would then implement that request by the city council, allow the fencing to be put up against the concrete open trench. The reason we're doing this is because there was a conflict within these two city ordinances. One had the six-foot. One had the six-foot setback, the other one allowed it up against the concrete channel. So this clears up that conflict and will allow the fencing to be up against the concrete channel, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item or questions of Mr. Mice?
When you came to the ordinance committee, Ms. Eads brought it up. Since she's not here, I'll bring up what her issues were, is that exactly what the city attorney said, that we were kind of cutting the people off access to be able to clean their property and maintain it. Now, the question, there's a grandfather deal in there, too, isn't there?
Oh, sure. Anything that meets, anything that is in place right now, we're not going to change, move, or anything else. This would only apply to those situations that would happen in the future. But then again, this allows a person to put their fence anywhere on their property that they want. If they want it up against the channel, they can. If they want it six feet back, they can. That's up to the property owner.
What brought this to light is blockage on drainages from fence posts and fences. But this is as good of a compromise as we can get.
Right.
Any further questions or discussion? We do have a motion and a second. Ms. City Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Four, two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Yes.
He's trying to be better than me, yes.
I was, actually, it took me longer.
Yes, motion carries. Discussion item number four.
Discussion and consideration for adoption, including any amendments of an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 27, Nuisances, Article 1, in General, Section 27-2, Declared Unlawful Penalties in Article 2, Weeds and Trash, Section 27-28, Accumulation of Rubbish, Declared a Nuisance Penalty, Providing for Repeler and Severability. Mr. Mice and Mr. Stroh.
Do you want to go first, or you want me to?
Go right ahead.
Okay. There are two amendments that are being proposed. One, we noted when we made amendments to this ordinance before, we had a Scrivener's error, and we increased the administrative penalty from two-hundred-and-sixty, from two-hundred dollars to two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. That was actually placed in two locations, it was only supposed to be placed in one. So one change is to return that administrative fee, administrative fine, back down to two-hundred, which is comparable with many of the other municipalities here in the metropolitan area. The second item will allow the city, if they find accumulated rubbish, and issue a notice to clean it up, and then that cleanup does not occur, and the city has to go in and clean it up. It will allow us, within that notice, if we find additional rubbish on the property, to clean that up as well, and to get that taken care of so that, and then assess the cost of that to the homeowner. This is what we do with weeds and trash and high...
Tall grass and trash.
Yeah, tall grass and trash. We already do that with those two items and those two notices. This would make this program the same as with those two. Contained within your packet is the notice that we would issue on that, that shows where those changes would be, take place pursuant to that notice. We added the notice in here because councilperson Eads requested that we highlight some of that language more during the ordinance review committee, and we, so we wanted to show that so, to meet that need, to show where we highlighted it, so it would stand out better for our residents to understand that this is what could occur. And so with that, the ordinance review committee did approve this change on a three-to-zero vote. Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Mike?
Answer any questions you may have. Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions of Mr. Stroh or Mr. Mice?
Yes, can you, I'm not sure which one of you wants to do it, but can you clarify, and the reason the highlighted stuff is put on there, if I remember right, it's because the initial issue on the issue that Susan was talking about was trash in the front yard, and then there was trash in the backyard, too, correct?
That is correct.
So this will cover the whole property, correct?
Right. The ordinance, as the state statute, which is what we copy, already covered the whole property. She wanted it a little more specific and clear so that the constituents didn't have questions of that because of a specific incident that one of her constituents pointed out that they weren't clear of it. And so that is why we did the underlining and the bolding, to show that it is anywhere on the property.
And just so everyone's aware, just so everyone's aware that underlining and bolding is not just to show you guys where the changes are, that will remain in those notices when they're posted.
Right, that's what, yeah, this will help be a little bit better communication so that they know that the backyard's included as well.
And then, just to stress, the issue with adding the summarily to the rubbish is because it was not there. We have it for trash, we have it for grass, but what was happening, we'd see a brush pile, we'd go ride it. When we'd get onto the property, there'd be more brush behind the house, we'd have to start all over. And so the resident, or homeowner, or property owner, would be getting multiple admin fees because we would have to do multiple separate contracts.
Can you explain that? Admin fee, what, why that is on there? Because it's not just a simple look-up deal, correct?
Correct. Any, per our ordinance, it states that anytime we do a contract, there shall be an admin fee, and the admin fee in state statute is clear on what we can charge for. And it's supposed to be, we charge it for the, when we go out, a code officer has to go a minimum of two, three times to clear case. It also, when it's contracted, has to come to me. It also, then, once it's contracted, goes to finance to send a bill. If the bill's not paid, then it goes to city clerk to send it, file the lien, and we have a lien filing fee, and then we have, once it's paid, we have to then certify the lien, you know, reversed, and then back forward. So there's a lot of different people that touch it. The vehicles, the software, everything, it's what can be added into that, and that is where the admin fee came from. And for Midwest City, it is two-hundred dollars. Does that actually cover our expenses?
Actuarily, no.
Probably not fully, but it puts us in line with the rest of the metro's fees.
We were charging two-hundred, we weren't charging the two-sixty-five, they were in conflict, so we were charging the lower amount, just for the record.
Correct, and in our demolitions that we do... Why are we not covering our expenses at the very, this is kind of a hot topic for, hot item for me, and it usually always is. Why are we not covering at the very least, because you have four or five people touching it, you have filing fees, you have, why are we not at least covering our expenses? I'm not saying we should make money off of this, but we shouldn't go in the black, go in the red. We shouldn't go in the red on this. So for our... I know, right? You touched your text, that was good. So that you guys are clear on our administrative fees is the same two-hundred for a demolition, but we then also have a line item specifically for a title search because it is an added cost. So we do recover that, which is an additional expense. So every contract is different as to how often you have to go out, like I said. So when we were going out for rubbish, I'd go out originally, and we'd ride it up, that's officer's first time there, he goes back out after the ten days, documents it, generates the contract, then I sign it. They go, the contractor goes and does the job, the code officer goes back out and sees the additional stuff, we had to start all over again. So that is why the argument for summarily. To answer your question specific on the exact cost, we would be the highest in the metro at that. We don't feel that we need to be the highest in the metro at it. To mow a lawn for our contractor is sixty-five, excuse me, sixty dollars, and then for the city to be charging, you know, we're already three times the cost to mow it for an admin fee. We didn't want it... But through no fault of our own, somebody's not taking care of their property. I don't think that we should be losing money because of other people's actions.
Mr. Mice, aren't we limited by statute on how much of the administrative fees that we can charge?
We are limited, I'm sorry, we are limited in something that you heard up here before. We cannot turn a profit on our administrative fee. The administrative fee is strictly as councilperson Reed just mentioned or stated, is to recover our costs. Now, I don't know if we've done a cost benefit or a cost analysis to know exactly how much our costs are for that administrative fee, but...
Well, we should, because if we come to find out that our costs are one-sixty-five, we're in violation of state lobbies, we're charging more then. So we probably should do a cost analysis to figure out where it is, and I'm perfectly fine with us accepting this now, and then over the next six or seven months, do a cost analysis and figure out where it's coming in, so we know what it's actually costing us.
We did a cost analysis back when we instituted this fee, the council that was here, and that was our cost at the time, so...
How many years ago was that? We've had twenty-two percent increase in inflation in the last two years.
How long ago was that?
It's been a while. We were at fifty dollars and it increased to two-hundred, and... I think we should probably do it, I think we should probably do it.
We can look at it again.
I don't mind being the highest in the metro area because this isn't something you're competing with other cities.
The problem with...
It's just people who aren't taking care of their properties that are causing neighbors a problem, that are causing our city staff hours, that they could be doing something, hopefully, a little bit better. Again, I'm not saying it should be punitive, but we shouldn't be losing money on this.
The problem with getting too high, Sean, is that a lot of the people that are, fall into this category are already struggling, and we tack a bigger bill on, I mean, I just, we just need to be careful where we go with it.
I don't disagree with you, but I don't think that the other fifty-seven thousand residents in Midwest City should have to front the amount of money that these people are causing us to spend because of their inability to maintain their property.
I think the mayor had a really wonderful program, was it, what was it?
Rental Registration?
No, the cleaning...
The Community Partnership, and yeah, we still have that.
And so we need to really rejuvenate that to serve the communities that Pat is talking about, so we are not expounding extra burdens on their shoulders if they're already struggling, and then if people aren't taking advantage of free programs that are available to...
Totally agree.
Towards the solution, then you can come back and say, well, your fees can escalate. But I am interested as well, just, and I don't want to spend a bunch of money on a study that may end up costing us more than what we may get back when we fix...
We can do that internally to look at our control of costs.
But it'd be interesting to kind of see what our staff is spending versus what we're doing, and I just, just as a matter of record, and I just want to be transparent, we have one of the best, most ethical cities and city staff members I've come across, but I have seen certain municipalities begin to utilize these fines and fees as a predatory mechanism that...
Nor does it need to be, nor can it be a moneymaker. I, it just needs to be, this is, our cost is two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, you're going to pay two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Our cost is one-ninety-eight, you're going to pay one-ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, so what I'm hearing is the motion needs to be pulled and amended.
No, I think that we're fine to keep it here so we can go forward, and then a cost study can be done, and then this can come back to your alls. That way, that way, everything's in line for them, and then, once we figure out whether it's one-ninety-eight, two-ninety-eight, two-fourteen, whatever it is, we can come back and amend it for that dollar amount that it's costing us.
With that being said, the motion stands, and I do have a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Four, two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, guys, good discussion, once again. Item number five, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration for adoption, including any possible amendment of an ordinance amending Midwest City Code, Chapter 37, Streets and Sidewalks, Article 3, Transportation Plan, Division 3, Sidewalks, Section 36-67, Construction of Sidewalks, and Provider for Repeler and Severability. Mr. Bundy?
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This ordinance is to increase our minimum sidewalk width from four foot to five foot. This is for only new sidewalks, and I want to add that the sidewalk committee recommended approval, the ADA committee recommended approval, and the ordinance committee recommended approval.
And why are we doing this?
So when we, thank you. So for all-new development, they need to have sidewalks, so they put sidewalks in. This is, this would come into effect, instead of putting four foot, they would put five foot. Because of ADA, and it sets us up better in the future, so it's for ADA, five foot.
Is this for residential...
All-new sidewalks.
So long as it was a sidewalk, let's put it in the neighborhood. They were getting in discussions, so they're taking a motion and we can discuss it.
Move to approve.
Second, a motion, second.
Go ahead, Mr. Reed. Somebody put the sidewalk in my... Two hundred.
That's a, that's an it depends question. Most likely, there's going to be a right-of-way easement that the city has that will cover that item and allow that requirement for that sidewalk to be put in.
Who maintains it?
That, it depends on what the easement says.
We've had a very spirited discussion over that. I, on the occasion, Mr. Bundy, Mr. Sullivan, it's my personal opinion that if we make developers put sidewalks in and they get through, then we don't, but we have no money to maintain. So that's the dichotomy of this whole discussion, is at what point we make people, and I've got a lady over on Oak Grove, and her hot sidewalk was so deteriorated, she went and reclaimed the property in front of her house. I can't really say that I blame her. So therein lies the issue that we're going to have to address at some point in time. Bringing it up. Just like with everything else, money's the answer of what's the question.
Well, but Don doesn't really have, and I'm not picking on you, you can't give a legitimate answer as to who's responsible for that sidewalk, because it depends on what the easement says.
Right, it's a case-by-case type of thing.
I'm assuming that there are some sidewalks, that the owner, it got poured today, the easement wasn't right, he could take jackhammer it up, put grass tomorrow, there's nothing that we could do.
If the easement, if we did not have a proper right-of-way easement, you're absolutely correct.
So what happens if somebody's walkie is not maintained properly, they trip and fall in somebody's yard? Who could sue?
I would guess, most likely, we are going to get a tort claim request on that. We would, and have to handle that accordingly. Now, we would have to look at the situation, look at what, the easement that was there, do we have a right-of-way easement? Is it our responsibility or not?
And I'm not against...
And it's, in other words, it's a fact, case-by-case type situation, so...
I'm not against sidewalks, I think they make a neighborhood better, but I am against putting something on private property that causes a maintenance issue, might cause a lawsuit issue, might cause all kinds of issues, that we're doing the very best thing that we think that we can, but we don't have the money to maintain it, and it becomes an eyesore that somebody else's property sits on.
So I don't, I don't think this particular agenda item is requiring that everyone build sidewalks on their properties, what we're discussing is the width of the...
All-new, all-new.
That is correct.
All-new. It's not, but it is a discussion, and eventually, we are going to have to come up with a solution.
Yeah, but I do, I just want to put on record, I attended and participated in our ADA committee, which, Mr. Bundy, thank you so much, you guys are doing such extraordinary work, it made me so proud to be a resident of this municipality, to see that we are on the front lines of equity and equality work. And I will tell you, this item passed through unanimously through that committee, and I think it's just so important to listen to people who are directly impacted by this issue. It is about their right and their ability to have access to...
I'm disagreeing, I'm pro sidewalk, I am not pro...
Yes.
Causing somebody, private citizen, to have additional costs.
And we encourage you to invest some of your money to help us build that infrastructure.
Oh, I'm going to give you our time, anything you say is on the record, so you don't have to say for the record.
On the record. But I just wanted to encourage all of us to consider their ability to be able to get through our city in a safe manner, and I know a lot of the wheelchairs that folks use are the width of it. I know, for example, sometimes I take my dog for a walk, and some of the smaller sidewalks, it's almost hard for the two of us to even walk side to side. So imagine being in a wheelchair, maybe having an animal or something like that as well.
Brandon, what are we going to do whenever we have a development that has four-foot walkways now, and they're still building in that area, and then going to have to go to a five-foot? How's that going to work?
So the way we would address it is, once this ordinance comes into effect, that's when we, any engineer plans approved after that date. So if there's a, you're right, there are some subdivisions that are still building out, they would just continue with what was approved originally, just to be consistent, but any new subdivisions, five-foot sidewalks.
So right now, Timber Ridge is... So right now, Timber Ridge is developing new areas, or supposedly will be, probably not right now because of the economy, but at some point, they might develop again. So in those new areas, would they go to a five-foot if there weren't consistent four-foot walkways around that area?
Yes, the new phases would be five-foot, so it's really just the phases that are, are currently ongoing or finishing out.
Okay.
So can we do some kind of amendment on that? Where Phase three comes in, you don't instantly have a five-foot sidewalk, they're able to build a little bitty, so the four-foot sidewalk goes to a five-foot sidewalk, instead of building a five-foot sidewalk up to a four-foot sidewalk, and it looks like a bunch of drunken Irishmen designed it?
We can take care of that without an amendment.
I'm an Irishman and I drink, so I can, I can.
We, we can, we can take care of that without the, the ordinance, it'll still be fine.
Okay.
Okay, I do have a motion, and I have a second. Is there any further discussion on this particular item? You got off the hook, Mr. Sullivan.
Well, thank you.
Hearing or saying none, Mr. Reed. Ms. City Clerk, could you conduct a roll call vote?
Four, two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Bundy. We're proud of you.
He cleans up well.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into new business public discussion of our agenda. We do have one person that has something to bring before the council. Let me, Mr. Treaster, go ahead and make your way to the podium. Let me remind you that since it is not a agenda item, we cannot engage in a back-and-forth conversation with you on your particular issue, but we will take notes, and if it's something that we need to bring back as an agenda item, we will do so in, in, in short order. So would you state your name and address, and the floor is yours, Mr. Treaster?
Hunter Treaster, address is five-zero-five East Air Coop Drive, Midwest City, Oklahoma, seven-three-one-one-zero. Excuse me, I may be a little nervous, so.
Relax.
I've never been up in front of people like this, especially, you know, in this kind of setting. So I would like to say that, before I start, there are two sides to every story, and tonight, you're going to hear my story, at least my side of it. So on nine-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, I was arrested for trespassing at a property that is here in Midwest City. I don't know if this property is considered public property, private property, or city property. I've been told several different things by several different people, including a lieutenant for the police department, Lieutenant Ron Weatherly. I got into a heated discussion with him in front of the records lobby the other day, told me that it is not, in fact, public property, the animal shelter I'm speaking of. It is not animal, uh, public property, it is city property. And I asked him to explain to me the difference between city property, public property, which he began to get a little irate. I had to tell him to back up and calm down several times in front of another lieutenant, Terry Cole. This is not the way that I feel like the police should be acting towards citizens of this city. But to, to further on to that situation that I was arrested on, nine-twenty-two, or nine-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, public property, trespassing. So my question to you guys is, what constitutes somebody to be able to be trespassing on public property? I know you can't engage with me, unfortunately, but I did read the ordinance, twenty-eight dash fifty-four is the section. It does say each and every entry made into that property, which I did not make an entry into that property, and then it says every time a public official asks that person to leave that property. Not only was I not asked to leave that property, I was told that I could not leave that property by one officer, Bishop. When he arrived on scene, he was the first officer on scene, fifteen-thirty-five. I got the police report, I did my research. Lieutenant Ron Weatherly did not help me with that situation. He plainly could have, because I asked the records officer, who was the first officer on scene, and he told me that it was Officer Reynolds, which was the arresting officer. He was not the first officer on scene. So Officer Bishop, when he approached me, asked me if I had any weapons on me. That's the first thing he said to a citizen of this city. Not, hi, how are you? Not, what's going on today, sir? It was, do you have any weapons on you? Which I said, is it illegal for me to have any weapons on me right now? Because, I mean, I am protected by my rights, as we all are aware of. He said, no. I said, am I being detained? He failed to answer that question. I said, am I being detained? He failed to answer that question. I said, am I being detained? He said, no, but you cannot leave. At that point, five other officers arrived on scene. I believe there was the reporting party, another citizen, and myself. The five other officers approached the reporting party, talked to her, and then made their way to me, and then stated that I cannot get my dogs out of the animal shelter today, and that I had to come back a different day, and then at one point, told me that I had to go to court for one of my dogs, to which I questioned why, and they said that they could arrest me for trespassing. I said, well, how? It's public property. And at that point, I was placed in handcuffs. So being told first that I could not leave this property, and then being placed in handcuffs within five minutes for not leaving the property, that is my side of the story. I have other things that I would like to discuss pertaining this story. The reason why I was at this animal shelter is because my dogs got out, and within an hour and a half, I was at the animal shelter to pick them up. The note that was placed at the residence, it was placed on an uninhabited residence for me to go pick up my dogs, which was directly next door to me. My dog was sedated in my neighbor's backyard, uninhabited, literally feet from my door, sedated, took to the animal shelter, and then I had court the next Monday, where the judge decided that euthanasia was the way to go. So they euthanized my dog. His name was King. I've had that dog for two years. I got him as soon as I finished my service for the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Department. I was a sergeant slash supervisor from twenty-seventeen to twenty-nineteen at the Oklahoma County Jail, in the intake discharge department. Now, let me ask you something. Do you know how long, by the way, I liked your comments about, comparing cities to cities. In Oklahoma City for trespassing, do you know how long you'll spend in jail? No, less than ten hours. You know how? Because it's not a very big charge. Do you know how long I would have sat in jail in Midwest City had I not paid the four-hundred-and-eleven-dollar cash bond? Until I seen the judge, which would have been four days. So my kids, my wife, my job would have been without me for four days. I feel like we can do something about that. If a city can do that right next to us, why can't we do that in this city? Now, I was born June second, nineteen ninety-four, right down the street at the Midwest City Hospital, I've been a resident here, I've never had very many problems with the city until here recently. I think we should have more meetings. I think we should have more meetings, definitely, because without this, how would I not be able to get my word out? How would I not be able to address all these people here? I feel wronged by this city, I feel wronged by the police department. I've been in several arguments with several people, just telling me to pick it up in court. Nobody can just apologize for the way that I was, you know, treated. I was treated horribly, horribly. Do you know how much debt I incurred in one day to the city of Midwest City? How about, would you like to know? So my dogs being at large, and, there's two dogs being at large, and then my trespassing, which is four-hundred-and-eleven dollars to get out of jail, paid the ticket, I'm going to go to court for that on the sixteenth, so I'm counting that. Plus, my payment arrangement for the two dogs at large is a total of nineteen-hundred-and-eleven dollars. One thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. I pay a hundred dollars a month now to the city of Midwest City, because I cannot afford to pay that in total, because I work forty-two hours a week. My pay is five-hundred-and-four dollars a week, two-thousand-and-sixteen dollars a month. That's before taxes. So I incurred a debt to the city of Midwest City in one day, equivalent to the same amount I make in one month. That's not right. That's not fair. I feel like there's different avenues we could take to punish people, if that's what we're going to do, because not only did my dog get put to death, now I have to pay for it. And I went to jail for him. I went to jail for my dog, what would you do for your dog? Thank you.
Hearing or saying none, we are adjourned. I call a word of the Midwest City Hospital Authority. There are two discussion items, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration for adoption, including any possible amendment of the October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
No action needed.
No action needed on number two. We move into new business public discussion. Is there anyone that has anything bring, to bring before the authority? Hearing or saying none, we're hereby adjourned, and we are done for the evening. Good night, everyone.